Good evening. Welcome to the Hillsborough Township Board of Education meeting for Monday, December 21st, 2015. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on December 17th, 2015, to the Hillsborough Beacon and Courier News. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
Shirley, Ms. Bogushevsky? Ms. Setafonte?
Here.
Mr. Cohen?
Here.
Mr. Dada?
Here.
Ms. Gillette?
Here.
Mrs. Haas?
Here.
Mr. Swanson?
Here.
Mr. Kent? We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correspondence is as listed on the agenda, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Schiff for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year, our last board meeting of 2015. I'm also pleased to be able to share with you some wonderful news from around the district with our board members in our community this evening. Six Hillsborough High School students were recently accepted into the Regional Two Honors Ensemble. Many students from high schools around the area tried out for this distinguished musical acknowledgement. Congratulations to the following students who were recently accepted into this prestigious ensemble. Joyce Liu, for orchestra, she's the concert master. Janice Lee, piano. Megan Zerold, clarinet. Mallory Clark, horn. Hannah McCarthy, percussion, and Harrison Strunk percussion as well. Eight high school chorus members were also chosen to participate in the Region Two Honors Chorus as well. Congratulations to Lena Berlach, Marjorie Calapetia, Juliana Cicatelli, Gillian Cuzzolino, Dipty Kumar, Gloria Ma, Catherine Romella, and Strudy Yana Madra. Congratulations on all of the accomplishments for both the kids who got into the Region Two Honors Ensemble and Chorus. Let's give them a big hand. Congratulations also goes out to middle school math teacher, Maureen Napolitano, who was recently announced as the NJEA and Z100 winner of the Jingle Ball Making a Difference Contest. Ms. Napolitano was nominated for this honor by former student and Hillsborough High School sophomore, Stephanie Wickman. Stephanie submitted an essay about the influence Ms. Napolitano has had on her life and her future. Stephanie's essay was chosen from over a thousand entries received by the NJEA and Z100, who partnered to recognize the impact that educators have on the lives of their students. Congratulations to Stephanie on winning the essay, and thank you to Ms. Napolitano for making a difference at Hillsborough High School. And before we end the superintendent's report, I also want to make mention that today is the last board meeting of Dr. Swanson. We do appreciate all of her service to the board and to this community, and we have some brief words of acknowledgement for you.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. As this is our last board meeting of the year, one of our board members is completing her term. On behalf of the Hillsborough Board of Education, I would like to take this moment to recognize and thank Dr. Lorraine Swanson for her time, efforts, and service as a board member since April of 2012. Not everyone may be aware that while this is an elected position, it is done so purely as a volunteer, requiring countless hours and facing many constraints. Dr. Swanson has served on the Human Resources and Education Committees. Among her colleagues here on the board, myself included, we would like to share this about Lorraine. She is viewed as a dependable and active board member among her peers and is willing to challenge the status quo. She has been an adamant supporter of curriculum and instruction that will help all of our students meet the challenges in their next phase of their life, whether that phase includes college, the workforce, military service, regardless of their backgrounds and ability. Like many members of this board, she can advocate for her values but is willing to listen to other sides to come to a better solution. She has contributed to this district prior to serving as a board member by volunteering her time with our schools as a member and president of several of our homeschool associations. So, Lorraine, thank you again for your years of service and contributions in assuring that Hillsborough continues to have an excellent school district, and we wish you success in your future endeavors. At this time, I will have Dr. Schiff present you with this plaque as a token of our gratitude for your dedication to the children of Hillsborough, and again, thank you.
Okay, that's all for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. So, we are going to move on to the approval of minutes. We have the December 7th, 2015 regular minutes. Can I get a motion to approve those minutes?
Second.
Second. Any comments? Okay, seeing none. Roll call, please, Mr. Mahmood.
All in favor? Any abstentions?
Sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Dr. Swanson?
Okay, motion passes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, on to committee reports. I believe that we have a full realm to go tonight, so as I see Mr. Gillette is here to my left, we'll go with him first.
Thank you, Madam Vice President, President, interim, whatever. So, the Operations Committee met on Wednesday, December 16th. We met at the middle school to facilitate a tour of the middle school parking lot, which was led by Dr. Trabalski, and he pointed out all the things, most, well, everything that we already knew. It was nice to take a second look at the problems with the parking lot and to get a better visualization of how not only the corrections but also the moderate improvements will help tremendously with the parking lot. So, that was good to have that, to start off with the tour of the parking lot. It was cold, but it was good. Let's see. Then we moved inside. We had a update on the upcoming referendum. First thing I'd like to say is that we're going to have the wording about the actual wording of the referendum will be on the ballot. We'll approve that at the first January meeting, which is like the first week of January.
January 4th.
January 4th. We're going to have that wording then. We don't have it yet. Our legal people are working on that. But we also discussed the community outreach that we're going to be doing after we get that out. Dr. Schiff is going to present to community groups. He's also asked board members to do what they can to help with that and appear with him and do some things like that. And Kia Bergman, our community outreach coordinator, was at the meeting, was present at our meeting to talk about that. We talked about the hours for the election. This is something that we hadn't discussed before because sometimes it slips your mind. There are actually our choices. You can have the election at different times of the day. As some of you may recall, when we used to have school board elections, it was only in the afternoon, like 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. This election, we decided, Operations Committee, that we'd like to have it from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., so a full 14-hour day election. It's a little, costs a little bit more than having it just a short part of the day, but we want to make sure we have full participation, as much as we can, of the public and so no one is short-changed by not being able to make it to the polls. You have, you're going to have 14 hours. We discussed, Mr. Carey, the principal at Autton Road Intermediate School, stopped by our meeting to talk about a project that's been, that we've talked about for a couple of years now, but now it's really come to the fore, something that, it's a minor construction project at Autton Road Intermediate School that now has to be done. They have a large room that the child study team members use as their offices, but also, they also take meetings in that room with parents and students as part of their IEP process and other related activities. So, a couple of years ago, they asked if they could put a temporary divider in the room so that when they're using it for parents or children's meeting, that people can still do their work on the other half of the room. It was only partially successful. They really need a completely separate room. So, Mr. Carey has asked if they can permanently divide the room, you know, until they don't, until such time as maybe they wouldn't need it anymore, but for all intents and purposes, it's a full construction permanent divider in the room. Mr. Mahmood went out and tried to find some quotes. We got a good quote from an unlikely source, which we didn't think about at first, which is something that Mr. Mahmood came up with. The Somerset County Department of Public Works also does minor construction projects like this, because they're also a government entity like us, and it's just part of its, like a shared service. They came in with a good price, which will be entirely offset with HSA funds and from Mr. Carey's current budget that he's already set aside for. So, there won't be any impact to our budget. We won't have to cut from anywhere else. Something under $15,000 for this. So, Mr. Carey explained it to us, and we were unanimous that he should go ahead and, that we should go ahead and do that project. We discussed a little bit about the 2016-17 budget, what Dr. Schiff and Mr. Mahmood told us where they are in the process. The budget managers have submitted their budgets. They're working through that now. They have nothing, obviously, for the board or the committees at this point. We discussed a little bit about what our assumptions will be for state aid. We don't expect an increase in state aid, so we're going to work on the budget based on that assumption. And then finally, Mr. Vrabel from Vrabel and Associates, he's our auditor, and he was, he met with us by phone to discuss the annual audit. The great news, as always, there were no findings, which means there's nothing, everything was, from an accounting standpoint, everything was perfect. Nothing that we need to change, nothing's wrong. He did go over a couple of areas in the audit, which I'm sorry, I don't see it in my notes. I meant to bring notes about that, but he gave a couple of areas that were put into the audit having to do with how pensions were calculated, and it's, so there's a large calculation there for employee pensions, but basically, it's all just informational. It doesn't have anything to do, because we don't pay the employee pension. It's from the state, but they, but they put it into, they want it in every school district's audit so that we can see the figures, what pensions are costing. So, he had to go over it because it was something new that I'd never seen in an audit before, but there it was, so he went over that. Other than that, there were no findings and no recommendations from Mr. Vrabel. And that's it. That's about all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. I will go to Dina Setafonte now for HR.
The first thing on the agenda tonight is Resolution B1. I wanted to let everyone know, November 23rd, as a board, we passed a resolution for two full-time instructional aides due to student needs, and, no, it was full-time. And this, we were told that based on the current student needs, we don't need those two positions. We actually only need two part-time positions. So, tonight, we have a Resolution B1 for two part-time positions based on student needs in different buildings. There are several policies we went over that have updates from Strauss ESME, so they're on tonight's agenda. We discussed the process for hiring coaching staff, and the committee was very comfortable with the rigorous process that goes through HR before any recommendations are made, from the posting to the screening to the committee level, all the way up to HR. So, we were very comfortable with the process that was described to us and the amount of interviews that a person has to go through for a coaching position. And then another thing we were updated on is there's a District Evaluation Advisory Committee, and this is a committee that we have in the district that's approximately 40 members of teacher and administrative staff. We're required to meet twice a year, however, this committee does meet in our district every other month. They're charged with overseeing the effective implementation of the evaluation process, so the new process that we put through, the strong model. And they also make recommendations for professional development and overseeing of the mentoring process of new staff members. Currently, they are reviewing the model, the strong model, but there is a new strong-plus model coming out that they're getting ready to evaluate going forward, the new version. They also have a subcommittee that's looking at revising their mentor handbook, and they also told us that the student growth profiles are probably not going to be out until March, which is very concerning to us as a committee and the staff, because then most of the 2014-15 evaluations will not be done until April of 2016. And then there were just a couple of other staff matters that at this time remain confidential.
Thank you. And Dr. Swanson with education?
Yes, so, we were joined at the meeting on Tuesday morning of last week by Mr. Enrique Pincay, who is our supervisor of world languages and ESL, and he informed us that New Jersey has now made a ruling that American Sign Language can be a course to fulfill the world language requirement at the high school. We are looking into implementing that here. He noted that they surveyed eighth-grade students, and approximately 76 students expressed an interest in taking ASL for at least one year. It's obviously a good option for some special education students to fulfill their world language requirements, since it actually is a class where no speaking will occur or would be required. And he also shared that there may be some difficulty in finding a properly certified teacher. The course will be included in the high school course of study guide, but it's contingent upon enrollments and having a teacher to teach it next year. Curriculum writing is in the budget, and they are, the administration will look into cost sharing for curriculum writing, if that's a possibility, and also, Mr. Enrique has reached out to some neighboring districts as well to see if we could share a teacher, because we anticipate that there would only be about two sections at the high school currently. We also discussed new course proposals in American Sign Language I, in a new science course, Astronomy CP, and also in world languages, Chinese IV. We approved textbooks for, two life skills textbooks for kindergarten and first grade, as well as the astronomy textbooks that would support that new astronomy course. And it's important to note that that astronomy course is being reviewed at Raritan Valley Community College as a possibility for concurrent enrollment. And if the course is approved, we'll write the curriculum for RVCC's approval as well. We also discussed that in the future, these courses are called CP, but obviously, if they're concurrent enrollment, we may need to come up with a new term there. It wouldn't be AP or CP, it might be, you know, college. We came up with a few during the meeting that I don't recall, but...
C.
C. It'd just be C. And we also approved the new science curriculum for organic chemistry honors, which would be offered to 11th and 12th graders who wanted to continue their chemistry studies, and this would be also open to children who were in CP chemistry, not just honors chemistry. We approved two novels for Reach Social Studies for a club that meets prior to school in sixth grade. It's a book club, so that's sort of interesting. We approved changing the course title from Biology II CP to Anatomy and Physiology CP, because that's more appropriate. That's, in fact, what it is. We looked at some initial data that Dr. Schiff showed us on the park data, and they were disaggregating the data by a variety of different means, economically disadvantaged students, not economically disadvantaged, and special ed versus regular education. And there is an obvious, though the statistics weren't shown, gap in that our lower-performing students are Black and Hispanic students versus whites and Asians, and then special ed versus not, versus regular ed. And although our gaps are more narrow than the state gaps, and what we, you know, among similar districts, they still persist, and this is something that I think would be a good goal to look at for the future in trying to close those achievement gaps. The administration is going to provide the committee with an analysis of students who missed reaching that Level III or Level IV, which is the approaching grade level or grade level or on grade level by a few points, just so we could see, because that would be obviously the easiest target of opportunity to push those kids over the edge. We also discussed the possibility of varsity status for several academic clubs, notably robotics and robotics mock debate, mock trial and debate. And these clubs were recommended by Ms. Bingert for, she cited the competitive nature of the clubs and the comprehensive time commitment, and in fact, you know, they are very competitive in nature, that they've always done very well, you know, in terms of our school, but also they commit a lot of time to those, to those clubs. We discussed the possibility of having an athletic varsity status and then an academic club varsity status, though these were the three that she highlighted and said would be the only ones recommended at this point in time. The committee asked for a more detailed information on the rigor and criteria required to receive the varsity letter, and we'll look into this further in the future. And then we discussed meeting attendance and just noting on the committee meeting attendance, whether or not people actually came before it was just a list of who was on the committee, but I think it's important to note who actually was there, and when you say the committee unanimously recommended, who was part of that recommendation. So, that was it.
Okay, thank you so much. Do we have any comments or questions from the committee reports at this time? No? Okay.
I actually do have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
With regard to the child study team construction here at ARIS, what portion, you said it was going to be cost shared between the HSA and Mr. Carey's budget? What portion?
The HSA, according to Mr. Carey's, what he's reported, is that they've committed $5,000 to the project.
Okay. So, that's their major goal for this year, then?
I, probably, yeah, probably.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have anything else at this time? No? Okay.
You missed it, Judy.
So, now I'm going to actually open up the floor to the public for comments specifically on the 2016-2017 budget. If there are any comments, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none? Or maybe? Yes? No, Thomas? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Do we have any comments from the board at this time on the 2016-2017 budget? No? Okay, seeing none. I'm going to actually open up the floor to the public at this time to comment on the, on new business, specifically, Thomas. So, please state your name and address. Do you have any comments about new business at this time, not the action agenda?
You'll tell me if it's new business or not.
Okay, state your name and address, please, sir.
Thomas Zubelli, Nine Upper Neshanet Court. Oh, okay. Do you want me to repeat that? Thomas Zubelli, Nine Upper Neshanet Court, questions concerning the referendum?
Go ahead.
Okay. So, as we all know, the turnout rate this past election in November was abysmal, 20, between 20% and 22% turnout overall throughout the state. I understand the reasoning may be putting this election in March versus June, when we're actually going to have presidential primaries and other things. You know, we don't necessarily want politics to necessarily be the determining factor, even though we all know that that might be, but we don't want it to be the sole determining factor as to why someone might vote a certain way on the referendum. But...
No, it's a timing mechanism. It's not done on purpose.
Oh, okay. Fair enough.
Okay. Mr. Cohen?
Let me get through the question.
Yeah, let him get through the question.
I know, but I just wanted to keep me thinking it was done on purpose, and I don't...
Yeah, no. We'll let him finish with his statement.
Fair enough. So, then, I guess, more to the point, how are we going to get out a higher turnout? I mean, I know that Mr. Gillette spoke to having the 14-hour window. That, I mean, that doesn't really change much in terms of getting people out. I know we can't force people to vote, which I would never support, but, so my question is, how are we going to get a higher turnout? What's the talk amongst the board to promote this, because this is seemingly very important, and so we'd want the highest turnout as possible? So, what are, what is the board doing to ensure that that happens?
So, at this time, what I can say is that there is a rigorous communications plan that's being developed through Ms. Bergman to get the word out. We have spoken, I know I personally have spoken with the Mayor and Township Committee to get their assistance. One of the things that we want to address is that the reason that we're going to referendum is that we would be getting 40% of this project paid for by the state. Whenever the state is giving you free money, you go for it. So, we are going to go to the public. We will be on Facebook, we will be all over social media, we are going to be attending meetings to get the word out. Now, whether that happens or not, we, all we can do is try. So, I will also turn it over to Dr. Schiff to give his comments on this as well.
Thank you. Also, ballots will be made to mail to all registered voters as well. This is a very interesting referendum, because as, as Ms. Haley was indicating, close to six, between $600,000 and $800,000 of taxpayer dollars will be returning to Hillsborough from Trenton if we pass this referendum. Now, the other part that's interesting is that the other 60%, we have in our cap reserve, so there is no tax impact on the community. However, we have to go out to a referendum in order to have permission from the community to go into debt. We'll be going into debt for one year. Interest rates are still very, very low, and by going into debt for one year, we pay it off through the 40% that's coming back to us from debt service aid from Trenton, and we have 60%, the remaining, the balance, 60% in the bank.
And if I can just add before...
I was going to say, Dr. Schiff, could you explain to the public for the record why we're doing it in March?
Well, the first reason is that we want to complete the project over the summer. Doing the parking lot at the middle school will require us to shut down that facility. So, for a matter of weeks during the summer, we want to get that project done. Also, we want to complete the turf field, refurbishing of the turf field during the summer as well. So, March is the ideal time to be able to get that approved, get it out to bid, and get that work done before the students return in the fall.
And if Mr. Mahmood could just comment on the process that we had to go through to get approval from the state as well? That has something to do with the timing.
Absolutely. There, thank you, Ms. Haley. There was a period of time where we did have to forward our applications to the Department of Education. There is a multiple layer of review. Ultimately, there was a preliminary eligibility cost letter that we had to wait for. Took us a lot of time to get that through the state, and then ultimately, we got a final eligibility cost, which the state then committed to the fund. So, we would look at that reimbursement. That letter is the state's commitment to the district that they will actually bring back that money to the district. So, that process between the architects, the design, the engineers, took a lengthy period of time, so we're grateful that we did get that approved, and at this point, the money is waiting for the board pending the outcome of March 8th's election.
Okay. Well, thank you for your expertise on this and answering my question in detail.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, 16 Laurel Drive, as well as president of the Hillsborough Education Association. I've got a question regarding the dual enrollment program that was discussed during the education committee report. I was curious if there were any, the dual enrollment program with RVCC, if there were any implications regarding the qualifications or requirements of the teachers that are a part of this or are going to teach those classes beyond what they typically would be.
Sure. May I refer that to Dr. Antunes?
Yes, so, currently, depending upon the department, not on our end, at RVCC's end, the teach, our staff member needs to either hold a master's degree in the actual content area, not in education, in the actual content area, or, as I said, dependent upon their end, 15 graduate credits in the content area. So, we've been going back and forth with different staff... So, we've been going back and forth with different staff members and things like that who are interested in doing it. So, we provide the transcripts to RVCC, then they send them to their department chairs, and then let us know where we stand.
Okay, is there a possibility that this could have a ripple effect, where longstanding teachers who possibly had these classes for, you know, a very substantial period of time are no longer going to be eligible to teach them? Or that we may shift this over to one person with a master's? I mean, is there any sort of ripple effect from this?
Well, we don't want to affect our curriculum and our students to do something like concurrent enrollment with RVCC, so if it fits, or if there are some slight adjustments we can make, we'll do that, or if other teachers are interested in doing that, we will be open to that.
Okay, is the board also...
We've actually done the opposite. We've kept a class as non-concurrent enrollment, because we didn't want to switch the teacher out of the classroom. So, we're having discussions at times debate with the administration at RVCC.
Okay. Are provisions being made for teachers who may not have a master's degree to assist them in getting those fifteen credits? Should they have a longstanding history with a certain subject to allow them to continue teaching it?
Well, same rules apply for graduate coursework that currently apply.
Okay, so, none beyond what we would typically say? Okay.
Whatever we're doing now is what we will continue to do if someone's interested in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maria DeLucio, 122 South Triangle Road. I'm here, I'd like to sincerely thank Dr. Sasan for your multiple years of service, terms of service, on the Board of Education. Dr. Sasan, you've always demonstrated your dedication to ensuring Hillsborough schools remain among the best. Your decisions and your votes have always demonstrated considerable thought, and your nonpartisan judgments have been appreciated, so thank you for your service. Also, I was hoping to maybe publicly allay the fears of the board regarding the controversial Cadillac tax that you are anticipating going into effect in 2018. I know you've had newspaper articles published, and you've had people here to speak, but I would like to say that the House of Representatives and a vote of 316 to 113, and the Senate with a vote of 65 to 33, both voted to delay the Cadillac tax until at least 2020, and the President signed the bill on December 18th. So, that is no longer need to be a concern or a worry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the floor to the public on the action agenda. Do we have any comments on the action agenda from the public this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to open up to comments from the board at this time before we go to roll call on the action agenda. Is there anything specific that anybody would like to bring up at this time? No? Okay. Dr. Schiff, I'm going to turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Haley. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of Education to approve travel and related expenses, the Hib investigation lists, the textbook adoption as reported out of Education Committee, as well as new science curriculum, novels, course title change, new course proposals, changing out of district placements, approve the out of district placement, and the field trip.
May I have a motion to approve items A1 through A10 of the action agenda, please?
So moved.
May I have a second? Thank you. Any other comments? No? Okay. Mr. Mahmoud, roll call, please.
Surely. Ms. Settefonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Dr. Schiff, Human Resources, please.
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions that I'm recommending under the area of Human Resources, to approve the resolutions to split one full-time instructional assistant position to two part-time, to approve the retirements of Jim Durham, who was a teacher with us since December 1st, 2001, and we appreciate his service to this district and the students, as well as the community, to approve resignations as listed, termination, revised long-term substitutes, revised contracts, contract changes, revised mentors, and approve the appointments of teachers, long-term substitutes, instructional assistants, purchasing assistants, substitutes, extra-period coverage, six-period coverage, policies and regulations, a variety of them. And that's all I have for Human Resources.
May I have a motion to approve items B1 through B11 dot 12 of the action agenda, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any comments? Okay, seeing none, Dr., sorry, Mr. Mahmoud, roll call.
Surely. Ms. Settefonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Schiff?
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of Operations to approve monthly financials, bills list, the fiscal year 2015 audit, and joint transportation agreements with the Somerset County ESC, Middlesex County ESC, and transportation renewal contracts as listed.
And...
And one donation from Campbell's Labels for Education Sweepstakes, a donation of $10,000 for Woodfern Elementary, phenomenal.
Which is amazing, so thank you to Campbell's and to everyone at Woodfern for their hard work. May I have a motion to approve item C1 through C7 on the action agenda?
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry.
We'll do that, yeah, okay.
Okay. So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion or items that need to be separated?
C4.
C4, okay, so can I get approval, Mr. Mahmoud, on C1 through C7, taking out C4, please?
Sure, would you like a roll call?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Settefonte?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Dada?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Ms. Sasan?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, do we have any comments from the public on old business? Okay, seeing none, do we have any comments from the board on old business, Mr. Gillette?
Yes, thank you, I also want to take a moment to thank Dr. Sasan for her almost four years of service, really, and I wanted to point that out, because just about every year, every year that I've been on the board, and I think this goes for Judy also, that we always have a new board member every reorg. But there was one period there, from April 2012 to January 2014, where we had the same members for 21 months, and it was a very productive time. Dr. Sasan, you're a big part of that, although we didn't agree on very much, I don't think, over the past nearly four years. I'm very often in the minority on this board, so that means I disagree most of the time with most of the people, so that's nothing strange. But I want to echo the words of Dr. Schiff and everyone that spoke, that you were very proactive on the board, I think you did a good job, you know, great, great job, good to great, as they say, and I think you'd be missed on the board, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mrs. Haas?
I am so sorry that I was late today, my car wouldn't start, but then again, it's 16 years old, so it's sort of expected at this point, but I had planned to hand off to Lorraine the Education Committee report, because unfortunately, being on a committee with me for three years, you don't get that opportunity very often, because I never miss a meeting. So, I'm very grateful that she did the report, and I'm very grateful for her three years on the Education Committee, it's been a wonderful collaboration. This is somebody who's the most highly educated person on the board, she's very altruistically employed as well, and very involved in everything she does with, you know, the community, and especially with kids. And, you know, as a committee member, smart, thoughtful, reasonable, always puts kids first, and I am going to miss you terribly, because Lorraine was always the whiz on statistics. Jordan and Lisa would put up these massive charts, and Lorraine would zero right in on exactly what we as board members should be focused on, and I don't quite know what we'll do without that, and always supportive to everything the administration, we're trying to accomplish. Most of all, I will miss Immanmangling your name for about two out of the four years you were on the board. Roll calls will never be the same, and again, I will just, you know, miss all of your contributions, and I hope you'll stay involved with the schools, but I'm sure you will. So, thank you very much.
Do we have any other comments at this time? Okay, I'd just like to make a brief statement, I wanted to take the time to wish everyone who will be celebrating a very Merry Christmas and a safe and happy New Year. As we close out 2015, thank you to our amazing teachers, staff, and students, keep up the momentum, as June will be here before we know it. Enjoy the break with your families and loved ones, the Board of Education returns on January 4th for our reorganization meeting, and again, thank you, Dr. Sasan, for your service on this board. So, at this time, I would like to call for an adjournment. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you, and good night, everyone.